Going to call this regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectments order for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
First, sort of business public comments. We have no audience here at Town Hall, but is there anyone online who would wish to share a thought? Don't know who is, somebody's on the phone, but you're not muted. So is there anything you wish to contribute?
No, it's Matt. It's me. It's Marty.
Oh, it's Marty. Okay. All right.
As usual, my computer's not working right.
I was just getting ready to call you, Marty.
Okay. All right. No public comments. So we'll move on to item number three, correspondence. Was there anything that came in late? Okay. Moving on to item number four, first elections report. First thing is I'd like to make a motion. There was, to add to the agenda, there was one thing that was left off. It was kind of a late breaking thing. So I'm going to make a motion to add under item number 13, consideration of condemnation proceedings to obtain permanent sidewalk easements on certain properties on Worcester Street. So second, any discussion? Here are those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that carries. So that'll be item, item number 13. And moving on to the rest of the report. Just a brief update on some legislative actions. Apparently, the Appropriations Committee is expected to vote this week on SB 9, which is a proposal from the governor's office to reduce the cap on motor vehicle property taxes from its current level of 45 mils down to 29. Now, I believe that our, our bill rate has been frozen at 32 for many years now. So it's not a, it's not a huge change for us if, if this passes. And also, there is a funding bill attached to this that would compensate towns for any loss in value. So obviously, if, if the bill rate was reduced by law from 32 down to 29, there would be some loss of revenue from the town of Bethel. So the, the intent of the state is to fully reimburse that loss of revenue. However, the lobbying organizations that work on behalf of municipalities, namely, COST, Council of Small Towns, and CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, are opposing this bill because of the history in the past that the state has frequently put in funding mechanisms like this that prove to be very temporary and that they, then later, whenever there's a tight budget, those items get reduced or swept completely out of the budget. And that would have the effect of raising property taxes on homeowners and, and small businesses in the town of Bethel if that happened. So COST and CCM are lobbying for a more permanent solution as well as tax reform that reduces the burden on homeowners for funding so many essential services through property taxes, which for many people is a very regressive and difficult to afford tax. So that's item number two. Item number three. Just a brief update on COVID, as I'm sure everybody has been fully informed by just watching the press. The, what's called the BA2 variant is now prevalent in Connecticut and it is more contagious. But for those who are vaccinated, less severe. So never, so the hospitalizations are still very low, but the incidence of new infections doubled in the past week. It went from 5.1 to 10.1 from last week to the current week, and the positivity rate jumped up from about 1.9 to 3.2. So there, there are no new mandates expected or contemplated at any level, not, not the state level, not the local level. But, you know, we encourage everybody to follow the health guidelines and keep yourself safe. You know, wear masks if that makes you feel more protected around other people. I do in, in most public settings, like in shopping, when I'm going to be around people I don't know. But that's, that's an individual choice. So that's the, well, well, the new numbers are published every Thursday evening at about 5 o'clock. So I'll, I will update everybody at, at each, at each select meeting. That's all I have to, my colleagues have anything to add or any questions?
I'd just like to have a moment of silence for Dana Brady, Judge Brady.
Yes.
He was a longtime resident of Bethel, served his community well, and was judge appropriate for many years. So he'll be missed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 15th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
All right, any, any discussion or any corrections? Very good. I'll try your minds. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Item number two, consideration of the proposal from the Gordian Group concerning the municipal center GP room lobby renovation. It's not the GP room itself, it's the lobby, as recommended by this public site and building committee. You have in your packet a memo from public site and building. They have recommended a total of $470,000 to proceed with this renovation. This would be paid via the ARPA funds. And any months ago, when we began this project, at that time, we had not contemplated having an owner's rep and we were looking for a way to get this project underway, which has been, sort of been in the hopper for many years. The Gordian Group was recommended to us by the Council of Governments. They, they have a contractual relationship with the Council of Government, with the Central Connecticut Council of Governments, also known as CROG, also with the Office of Policy and Management. And I'll, I'll just paraphrase, the, the way they do business is they prebid for, for services with various contractors who guarantee certain levels of pricing. And these bids are accepted by the state of Connecticut, which relieves municipalities from going through the bidding process if they so desire. Gordian also provides some architectural and design services, which they have also devoted to this project. And at this time, I'd like to invite Brienne Wonderwood. Did I, did I pronounce your name properly?
Vanderwood.
Okay, Vanderwood. Sorry. Brienne is, is a representative with, with Gordian. And if you want to just give a brief overview of how that contract pricing works for my colleagues, Rich and Brian, I would appreciate it. Then I'd like to open the floor to Rich and Brian for, for questions on this proposal.
So thank you for allowing me to join the meeting today and talk about the program. Gordian partners with both individual entities and councils of governments and national cooperatives across the country to help bring a streamlined procurement method to municipalities to help relieve the, the burden associated with the public procurement process. We streamline the, we streamline the procurement process by by issuing, publishing what's known as a construction task catalog. This construction task catalog has 375,000 line items of construction-related tasks. Each task includes equipment, labor, and material, and is priced specifically for our Connecticut program. So we're not using national averages, we're not using regional averages. We're understanding the price associated with equipment, labor, and material for Connecticut at the time of the bid when we publish this catalog. Once we publish the catalog, CROG then goes out to bid for contractors in four regions for our road and bridge contract and four regions for our general construction contract. The contractors are awarded based on being the lowest responsive, responsible bidder of their adjustment factor. Their adjustment factor, while simplifying it a bit, is overhead and profit. Think equipment, labor, and material in the construction task catalog, overhead and profit in the contractor's adjustment factor. Those two are multiplied to give you fixed pricing per task in the book. So I just want to pause and see if there's any questions.
Who is the actual contract with? Gordian or BMP?
BMP, the contractor.
And how do you get paid?
The contractor pays our fee, and we're only paid on projects that move forward.
So it's like a contingency system, correct?
So when the, the contractors, the contractors pay our fee only once they're paid for the project. So if a project moves to purchase, you issue a purchase order and the project's completed by the contractor, once they're, they're paid, that's when our fee is due. There's nothing additional that comes to the town. The proposal that you have is the price of, of the project.
And how are the, how do you pick a contractor? Are multiple contractors asked to bid on this? Or do you select someone?
To clarify, we don't pick it. It, the bid is done by CROG. So Gordian is not the entity that's bidding out this program. It is CROG. CROG advertises this bid, and it is open to anybody who wants to respond. And CROG awards based on being the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
So CROG does use a competitive bidding process to choose the vendors, correct?
That's correct. Both, we were, the services that Gordian provides were, was a competitive solicitation, as was the contractors.
Good. What exactly are you doing for the town? Can you explain to me? Do you represent the contractor? Do you represent the town?
We don't represent anyone in the sense of, we're, we're helping to create a program that allows you to complete projects underneath this bid without having to go out to bid, because CROG has already done that work upfront for you. So the process starts by a town initiating a job order. Once that job order is initiated, one of my colleagues, who are account managers and have spent their career in the construction industry, will schedule what we call a joint scope meeting. That joint scope meeting is attended by the town, anyone from the town that wants to attend, that, that makes sense, to attend the joint scope meeting, the contractor, as well as a Gordian account manager. Our account managers are there to help develop the scope of work, ask that that be confirmed by our client as correct for the scope of work. Now, in this instance, we do have designs, so that effectively is the, the scope of work. And then the, once we get confirmation on the scope of work, the contractors then put the proposal together based on that scope of work. Gordian then reviews the proposal prior to it being delivered to the town. Our goal is to ensure accuracy of that proposal. We want to include the, we want to ensure the contractors included everything they should and nothing that they shouldn't. Once we're confident with that proposal, that's when we deliver the proposal to our town and do an in-depth review with the town to answer any questions and make sure that the overall proposal is clear. So what we're doing is bringing you a solution that allows you to quickly and efficiently move from that job order to proposal review to construction start that much sooner.
Now, when, when you put these out to bid, do you include time is of the essence? I mean, or how do you, who structures the final contract?
Are you asking about that contract that the contractor has with CROG or with the ultimate end user?
We're the end user. So you're bringing the bid forward to us. Who's responsible for the final contract and all the documents? Like time is of the essence. I mean, obviously, you know, you're going to have a start date, a complete date, and a commercial project, right? And there's going to be something in there to protect the town, as well as I'm sure the contractor's going to want some protection. But who handles that aspect? I mean, is that included in the 407,000 or, you know, are we going into, is there separate legal fees and whatnot for that?
So if the, the contractor already has a contract with CROG, if an additional contract is required by the town, that's something that is between the town and the contractor. This program does allow you to issue a purchase order based on the CROG contract.
But I guess.
Scheduling is done directly with the contractor.
Who, who's managed, who's managing the contract and reviewing the contracts? Is CROG telling us that when we accept this proposal that the work is going to be completed in a timely and satisfactory condition? Or, I mean, I guess, or is it, you know, our building and site committees' responsibility on top of this to hire someone to watch the project and make sure, you know, that's my question. I mean, it sounds like you guys kind of, you know, are basically taking the role of like the purchasing agent by putting the bid out and accepting bids and then bringing the bid to us. What, you know, we have a budget, which is fine. It's nice to see a budget. But what additional expenses? Because it sounds like you guys aren't reviewing the contracts. And, you know, what additional expenses do we as a town incur? Or maybe, maybe the building committee, is Nancy here?
Yeah, Nancy's.
No, Nancy's here. Nancy, you might have these answers that I'm asking.
So the building committee took the Gordian bottom line of 407, so let's call it four week, and added a contingency on top of that to handle mostly what we were looking at is handling unforeseen circumstances, being that we're working on an older building and our committee's experience, both recently and in the past, working with older buildings and even new construction, that we find unknown things. So we've added in a contingency. We haven't created any lines for the contingency as far as this much will be for this, this much will be for that. If there are requirements, which again, this would have to go to Brienne, I, I would think if there's any bonding or any of that kind of, is that built into your costs, insurance, et cetera? Is that built into the cost that Gordian put together, or is that something that the town needs to be looking at?
Does the contractor put up a performance bond?
I have to look if, I, I have to look if the performance, if a performance bond was added on to this proposal. Any insurances, any requirements that you have? As I mentioned earlier, the contract is with the contractor directly, so they would be responsible for providing you with that.
Nancy, have you guys, Nancy, have you guys done any, any environmentals to see what type of, you know, I see they have a $31,000 allowance for demolition, but you know, obviously, if we come across asbestos tiles or we come across, I know you guys figure some lead removal, but have we done any testing to give an idea of what the environmentals are and what we're dealing with?
Right. So in that area, we did do some testing. We had Hygenics do some testing several years ago in just the lobby area, but in the bathrooms, they poked holes in the walls of the old bathrooms that are still there. And did some testing, and they did testing on the mastic of ceiling tiles, mastic of floor tiles, et cetera. And came up with lead in the baseboard, so that's going to have to get removed and remediated or just gotten rid of in the appropriate way. But didn't find any asbestos in any mastic or in anything that they were able to find when they poked holes in the walls. Again, that's why we put a larger amount of contingency in, because again, when we start doing demolition, if they do run into something, they would need to do some more testing and make sure that everything is being dealt with in an appropriate way. We couldn't start doing any major demolition testing without running into some issues or possible issues. We didn't want to be making big walls or tearing walls down before we were ready to start the project.
So my last question, Nancy, is are you guys going to be running the project overseeing, coordinating with the builder to make sure it's done? Are you guys going to have to get some assistance from outside of the town? It just, I, I'm kind of a little confused. I think I get it, that basically this company, Gordian, packages everything up, sends it out to bid, almost like Shmenti or one of the big commercial contractors would, and they have verified vendors that they do. But who's actually going to be responsible? And do we have enough money in the budget for whether you decide to get an owner's rep or someone to be looking out for the town's interest? Because I mean, it's a, although it might not be the, the grandest project we've ever done, there's still quite a bit of work and, you know, who's going to make sure that it's being done to our satisfaction? I mean, Chris, the building department's so busy, they, you know, they'll do their inspections, but, so can you answer that and see what you think?
So, yes. So BMP, the contractor, provides an onsite, I'm not sure what the title would be, you know, they've got their own project. So they have a project manager, but they also have onsite superintendent who's going to be making sure that they create all the schedules and make sure that stuff's ordered and one of the things that they did bring up is that they do not start a job. Gordian brought this up at a meeting that we had earlier. And BMP was in, in agreement that they don't start a project until they've ordered the materials and have either stuff being ready to be delivered or stuff being ready to be supplied somewhere. So they're not going to start the project and then say, oh, we've got to wait six weeks now for this door to come in, so we'll just have a hole in the wall until the door comes in. So all of the materials, tiles, toilets, sinks, doors, all of that's going to be scheduled for ordering once we, whether we sign, and it's interesting to me that, that we either sign a contract with BMP or basically they'll also work on a purchase order. And once that process is started, materials start getting ordered, especially anything that's custom. And then, as I said, we don't start ripping things apart or doing any kind of work until all those materials are insured to be delivered in time.
They give you a timeline? Or probably, they say this is a three-month project, two-month project, six-month project?
I think in looking at the, and Bran, you can jump in here too. In looking at the kinds of materials that we're needing to be ordered, most of the stuff is standard. There might be a door or two, especially if we're replacing the doors going into the GP room. That might be some kind of a custom situation that might take a little bit longer, but we were looking at probably not starting for a couple of months and then maybe three months in process.
So is it, kind of? Is it accurate to say BMP then would be the construction manager?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I'm not sure if that's the title. I don't know if that's the title that they use. And Bran, you can jump in if there's a, whether they're called the general contractor or construction manager. I don't know which.
Well, yeah, what, yeah, the, to Brian's point, the function of oversight of the project and coordination.
Yes. Yes. And obviously invoices would come through us. Any, if we had, if we came up with some issues that we had to deal with, change orders or anything like that, that would have to come through us too.
That would still be under your control, correct?
I would think, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you keep that assigned to us, so.
Yes, right. When you put this out for bid, did more than one contractor bid on the project?
So the contract, so the contract, so the contractor, we didn't put it out to bid, the contractor.
Oh, the Gordian.
So, yeah, go ahead, Bran, give them that.
More, yeah, more than one contractor responded to CROG bid to award the contractors for each region.
Do you know what those results were? See, when the town bids, we, we get to see all the other bids. That's what I'm curious about. And, and.
Right. So this, so this wasn't, so this wasn't put out to bid as a project. Through the, through, for us. So through the council of governments and all that and Gordian, there are bids put in for the hundreds of thousands of things that Bran mentioned that are in there. It's a very thick book. You know, for everything from locks and toilets to larger things, miles and miles of pipe. So, so it's not specific to our project, so, so we wouldn't see the results of the bids of our project. And I don't know if Gordian keeps track or even if BMP keeps track of, it's, it's, it's like everything's on the state contract list, so to speak.
But she said that other people bid on it other than BMP. My question was, how many other contractors bid on the project? On the overall project?
On the overall program, on the EZIQC program. I don't have the number of how many bids CROG received for the overall program.
And BMP's really track record on doing remodeling projects? Have they done other remodeling projects in the near future? BMP did site work for us. I only know them as a site contractor.
They have done other, they have done other projects. They've worked for the city of Danbury and renovated an office in City Hall. They've worked for Danbury Public Schools, renovating a floor of a school, bathrooms, air conditioning, painting. Trying to get you specific renovation projects. Middletown Public Schools, they've renovated various different areas of the schools. The city of New London, they've done an addition to a dog pound, town roof, upgrade on doors in the police department. For the, for Southington, they've renovated concessions. They've done a roof replacement at the police department. So they, I mean, that's just a snapshot of some of the projects that they've done. But yes, they're, they're capable as a general contractor as well as one of our road and bridge contractors.
So just, I know what, to paraphrase to Rich's question, I just want to make sure I understand. So when, when Gordian puts out, or excuse me, when CROG puts out the bid process, there, the vendors are not bidding on, say, this particular project. What they're bidding on is to be the vendor of choice, correct?
They, right. So we publish a construction task catalog, which is the catalog with 375,000 line items in it. They have access to that catalog and they, based on that information, develop their adjustment factor. They understand where they need to be in addition to that line item. And from there, there, the contractors are awarded as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder based on that adjustment factor.
All right.
Now, there are four adjustment factors and they are weighted. The four adjustment factors are for prevailing wage, normal working hours, prevailing wage other than normal working hours, non-pervailing wage, normal, normal working hours, non-pervailing wage other than normal working hours. So for instance, on a $50,000 project that did not require So for instance, on a $50,000 project that did not require. Nights or weekends, they are going to be using their non prevailing wage. Normal working hours, if it was a $50,000 project that required nights and weekends, they would use their other than normal working hours for non prevailing wage. A hundred thousand plus, normal working hours. Or none, other than normal working hours if it's a nights and weekends job.
Did they figure this job as prevailing wage shop?
Yes, they did. They said they did when, when we had, when we had our meeting a couple of weeks ago with Brian and BMP. Because we were concerned, we wanted, we know we have to have prevailing wage and they said they did, they did figure prevailing wage in.
Is that somewhere in their contract paperwork? Has Marty seen the contract?
I know, so again, no, because we, we either do a contract or we do a purchase order. So I guess it's going to be up to. However, Marty and everybody feels comfortable as far as what the process is, as far as getting things started. I was surprised that they went on a purchase order.
Did they actually look at our plans? Like, you know, I'm, I'm kind of listening and I'm catching. Like, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, they'll say you have. 1,000 square feet of demo on this project and they go off a shopping list and they go, okay, well, it's $7 a square foot. Or whatever they determine is square foot, then you say you have so many square feet of lead abatement to do. So, you know, did Gordian look at the plans? And determine this, who looked at the plans and said, this is the scope of work is what I want to, that's what I'm curious about.
BMP has been at the municipal center a couple of times, along with folks from Gordian. Looking at the area, looking at the plans, and the original plans, we scaled them down a little bit. But they, you know, there was also discussion with the building department too, can we use the same plan even though we're not. Cutting a big hole in the ceiling. And we can, because it has all the plumbing, electric, et cetera in it. So BMP has been at the municipal center several times and checking the area out and also reviewing the plans along with a couple of folks from Gordian. This before Brian started on the project, but she's, she's been here to check it out too.
Gordian selected them based on the rates they provided for certain services and then they come and speak to you guys. The state, whoever it is, the state said that. I guess I'm just a little bit concerned that, you know, when it goes out.
I can understand Brian because I was kind of feeling the same way, I'm like, you know, we work in construction, we're used to. Going out and getting bids or getting quotes or talking to, especially when we know the people and we say, you know, how can you do this for me for this or whatever? And in the process of working on municipal projects for us, building committee, we were at least in the beginning, kind of looking at this whole Gordian thing, thinking, really? But as we've learned more, talked to the people at Gordian more, looked at the process. We see how it can be, it, it, it's obviously very helpful or especially for municipalities who have different levels of. Of process in place to ensure fair, transparent, et cetera, et cetera. The fact that it goes, it's the state contract list, or like the state contract list, it's not actually the state contract list. Makes it so that there's a few steps that. Can be, I suppose, I can say removed from the process. But it's still that fair and lowest responsible bidder and transparent situation. It's like, it's hard to wrap your head around it because it's not the way we do things. But when we met with, we had some Gordian folks here along with, like I said, BMP last month. And we, we all asked all those questions because we were still kind of trying to wrap our heads around it and so many other municipalities and Brian was reading some and I think they gave us a list. Man, I think they left you with a list of recent projects, sort of relatively close. I mean, Gordian's all over the place, they're not just in Connecticut, but these projects were Connecticut municipal projects and I think I remember some others too, but I'm not, I didn't get a list, get the list. I think Matt, you may have had it before we.
Well, we, we, yeah, we discussed it, Brian, maybe you remember, I, I know there were some. Multi-million dollar projects in our neighborhood, I think Danbury being one, New Fairfield, I remembered a couple of. Municipalities in our neck of the woods that had used your company services.
And not just site work, but some other renovation type projects.
What is the ratio of going this way versus doing normal bidding? Can. You have an idea about that?
I'm not sure if I could give you that information, I know it. Time wise, so if we were to have to put together an RFP, put it out to bid, time wise, we take up more time. And going back to looking at scheduling, part of, like I said, what we're having to deal with, with Gordian and with BMP is that. We're not starting until we get a majority of materials in place. And we also have to coordinate, work on that area with Park and Rec and Eileen's schedule. For that area and figuring out the best timing. To, because we're going to basically have to shut that area, the building down for a period of time and when's the best time to do that? So it, it, it saves us some time as far as going through the whole bidding process, but as far as what. I, I don't know if I can tell you and I don't know if Brian, you can, how do municipalities save 5%, 10%? You know, your time is, is money too. And in order to do that, we would have to spend more to put an RFP out, spend some time updating the plans and specs for the construction documents. To then put that out there in the world for contractors to bid on. So that would be an extra expense and at least for this project, we don't have to do that.
Is.
If you have any.
Is Peter Eckert still involved in this project overseeing anything?
Right, so I know that BMP has been in contact with him and, and looking at documents and. More for the other locker room and the other part, because what we have now for the. For the bathrooms, the GP room lobby and the bathrooms, et cetera, is a much more complete set of plans than what we had. For the other end, the locker rooms, and that's going to require some tweaking as far as plans and stuff on the, on his part.
So if we wanted to go out to bid for, for the bathroom areas, do we have plans and specify specifications currently for that?
We do, except that in scaling down the scope with not opening up the ceiling.
Well, that's a whole nother issue I'll discuss with you about, yeah.
Okay, we would have to, probably it would be best to scale the plans if we were going to put it out like that. That's pretty complete, we just mean to have him take a look at it, update it, make sure it's, you know, if the specs are two years old or the. Anything that's spec'd on there needing to be changed, model numbers, or do we need to update any things like that? If we were to blow a hole in the ceiling, that's going to require some considerable amount of abatement. Because there is asbestos or something up there, maybe in the mastic, I think there's asbestos in the mastic of the floor.
Nancy, I guess my last question for you would be, one. A few part questions, one, do you feel that the process that they're providing is above board? There was competitive bids, you know, there's been some stuff in the news where there's been some current concerns of steering up the state. And I want to make sure that as a town, we're not doing anything that's going to get us involved in some sort of legal action. So that's my first question, and then if you're satisfied with that, do you feel comfortable moving forward? You know, you're the one who spent the most time, I mean, we're just kind of reading what you send us. You know, obviously we're looking to the building committee for their recommendation, is this the way that you want to proceed? With this renovation, so if you can answer the first part and then the second part. If you need me to read anything, I will.
Okay, and you can, you can ask as many questions as you need to. You don't have to say it's your last question because there's always going to be more questions. So it, two part, obviously, I, you know, we're all kind of paying attention to what's going on at the state level. I know that we kind of looked at, we as a building committee kind of said, oh, do we have to be concerned about any of that? There's nothing that. That we as the town and going through getting state reimbursements and things like that have, has done that. That's untoward or, you know, we've done everything above board, we've done everything by the rules, et cetera, so I don't think we have to worry about any of that. With this and looking at the whole state contract or, you know, the CROG list. It is again new to me as, as using it as a construction tool for municipal, you know, our town projects. And again, it was a little hard to wrap my head around it initially, I'm much more comfortable with it, having had lots of conversations with. With Gordian, with BMP and also Eileen, who's here and can answer questions if you need her to. She's had a number of conversations with Gordian and with BMP on the project. And the building committee had a lot of questions too. Initially, we kind of didn't think we were, we didn't think it was going to move that way, partly because we weren't sure how it worked. Now we understand how it works, we see how, I think this can be, especially using the ARPA funds. A great asset as far as getting the work done quickly and without additional expense. Again, still wanting to say, still wanting to put in that contingency amount because. We don't know what we're going to find when we start busting walls down.
Well, going back to my first question, I have no doubt that you've done everything above board. I'm not questioning you or the building committees doing things, my concern is, is by going with. CROG or whoever, have they done everything? According to the rules and it was an open competitive bid process and that there was, you know, again, I mean. Steering is kind of a scary statement at this point with what's going on. I just want to make sure that, again Nancy, I have no question that you're doing things properly and that the building committee is. My question is, is, is this something we need to be concerned of? Was it, you know, was it open to three people, was it open to 100 people, you know? Do we have any concerns with the state looking at this or forget about the state, I guess the federal government looking at this and saying, hey, this wasn't done. The right way, because that, that could be a big issue. That's, that's, that's the question I wanted, that's, that's the real question, if we satisfy that, that we're okay going with CROG's. List of contractors and, you know, whatever, and we're not violating any federal. There's not going to be any federal oversight saying, yeah, this wasn't the proper way to go forward.
Right, and I, and I can understand that. I, I think that, that CROG updates their list periodically, I don't know what periodicity they use, Brian can probably. Speak to that and I think it's something that's been in place for a long time and so that it goes out there. With again, whatever periodic timing to update the bids so that anything that's on the list is up to date price wise, not just for materials, but labor, et cetera. And what was my other thought that I was having? So I think this is something that's been going on for a long time. But the ARPA funds being new, I think there are a lot of municipalities who are using this process. To use their ARPA funds and I think Brian, you can speak to that more than I can.
Yeah, does Marty, do you have an opinion on this, whether we're okay, whether this satisfies? You know, that we're not going to have an issue with everything that's been going on or, you know, them saying that we didn't satisfy this correctly? I mean, with ARPA, right? With ARPA and, you know, that we're not, you know, that we're okay to skip the bid process because this is all. You know, above board and, and, and we're good to go. Marty still with us? Are you there Marty?
Can you hear me?
Oh, now we can.
Okay, we, we've, we have used something like this in the past with the bids, not through this organization. But we have the state, I mean, we do it all the time with cars now and autos. I don't know if you're aware of that, I think you might be, so we have before and, and what we've come to the conclusion was. Was that in certain circumstances, we could accept what the state set up as the bids because they were getting. Numbers and information from other organizations. In this particular situation though, I'm still not sure who, who's in charge of BMP. I mean, I, I, I don't, I'm, we're being told we're going to do this by either a purchase order or we're going to do it by contract. I, number one, I'd like to know what we're going to do it by. And number two, my biggest concern is, you know, in the past, what we've seen is. It's very difficult for the public site and building committee to oversee a project by itself without having. The eyes and ears there at least a couple of days a week to see what's going on. And we found that true that, you know, with the two schools that were built recently, with the organization that they brought in that basically was our rep. I mean, two huge projects and we ended up doing very, very well with them, we just hired the same people. To oversee the, what, what we're hoping to be the police firing range project. And so I want to know, and I still don't have an answer, you know, I, I, I don't know what title you give BMP, but it doesn't make any difference, who's our rep? Who's going to be there to make sure that BMP is doing the job that they should be doing? I don't know. And I'd like to see a contract or something, you know, I think that if, if we're going to pay the bottom line. You know, if we're the ones paying the bottom line and BMP is responsible to us, then we should be getting a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's our choice to, to ask to have a contract rather than just go through purchase order. We can do that.
Yeah, but Nancy, the, the question was never answered, who oversees BMP? Us, you, the, your group? Your.
So in all the, right.
Well.
Right, and all the other, and all the other projects that we've done, especially recently. We, the Public Site and Building Commission have overseen the projects. We have with the school projects hired an owner's representative to help us.
That's.
Which is, which is where, yeah, we can, I know that the town put out an RFP for. I don't know what the title was and I don't know where that's going right now and whether this, that's going to be something that will also.
That was, yeah, that, those bids were open today and they were forward, there were four bidders and they were forwarded to. Public Works slash Engineering for evaluation and recommendation. So we should have that back within a week.
So will that, will those people be used to? Be owners reps on some of the projects for that you're using the ARPA funds for or how, which projects will they be?
Yes, yeah, that, that's a different topic, but yeah, that's, that's exactly it is, is to manage the ARPA projects plus some others.
So will they, will they be, will they be overseeing or owners repping the GP room lobby renovations?
We could, we hadn't planned on that, but Briad, let me, let me ask you, two questions. Does Gordian do any oversight of BMP on an individual project like this? Is, is that a service that your company provides as well?
We do provide construction management for projects where municipalities elect to add that on to a project. So. Earlier, when I mentioned the contractor pays our fee, this is something completely separate from that. We did do construction management on a wind and wastewater treatment plant renovation. So we acted as the, the construction manager for that project. So it, it is something that we can do, it, it is a separate fee and we can certainly provide a proposal for you if you're interested. The fee is part of our, is part of our program with CROG. So that is where you have access to our construction management services.
Okay. Now, the, the second question I had, and then I think Rich has noted, the second question is. Considering the construction boom that's going on nationally with the.
uh, considering the construction boom that's going on nationally with the massive amount of ARPA funds that are floating around and gearing up many, many other municipalities to do similar projects, is BMP capable of doing this project in a timely manner? Uh, you know, that we, we, we wouldn't want to sign up for something and be waiting two years for them to get around to it because they're too busy to, to handle the volume they have. Do you, do you know where they stand offhand in terms of that volume and their, their capabilities?
They are capable of completing this project. Um, I, I can appreciate what you're saying. The, the schedule is going to be paramount to this, this program, this project running successfully and on time, right? That is going to be something that's discussed between the town and BMP. Um, that is, those are all details that you will agree on. Um, this, this program in and of itself is a performance based program. If we have municipalities that are not happy with the program, they're never going to use it again and our contractors lose the opportunity to work with that municipality and likely many others because oftentimes when you experience a, a bad contractor with poor performance, you're likely to tell other municipalities about that as well. So this con, this program really incentivizes contractors to complete the project on time within budget because their, their next PL really depends on your satisfaction.
Well, that's because Gordian does not get paid unless we pay the contractor and the contractor does the work satisfactorily, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I'm not entirely sure how to answer. Um, what I can tell you is that, um, we don't, we don't walk away. Um, you know, something was mentioned earlier about change orders. But if there are any change orders on this project and they tend to be far fewer under a JOC program than with your typical procurement. But if there are change orders, the, the process to issue a proposal is the same, and we call it a supplemental, it's the same thing as a change order, but that supplemental job order, the process is the same as it was to issue that initial job order. So Gordian is going to review the proposal. We're there to make sure that it's accurate. We are still going to be involved in that sense. And if there are any issues, you know, we can only do so much, but we are here to try and work things out and make sure that you are satisfied with this program as well as the work.
Has, has anybody checked out City of Danbury references of BMP's work?
Yeah, Nancy, have you, did you hear that one?
Um, no, we did not do that. Again, as I said, the, um, the meeting that we had where a list of references was provided, I think it was sent in an email to you, Matt. I didn't get that list.
Matt, I, I'd like to make a motion to table this till our next meeting and give Marty, Marty time to maybe speak with the building committee, research what's going on and we'll get his advice in terms of how to proceed. You know, I want to see this project happen as much as anyone, but I'm not going to be prepared to vote tonight, especially not with the concerns that Marty raised. I mean, that's, that's pretty important to, to square away before we vote on it. And I think we let Marty do his due diligence.
I'll second your motion table.
Okay. Nancy, can you, well, Brianna, I, I, I may have that reference sheet that, that you left. I don't think it was in an email, but can you resend that? That so that we can, because, because we, we know a lot of people in the area. We can, we can have the building committee check references if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, um, we want you to feel comfortable with this program. I also can share some information just about how EZIQC complies with federal requirements for specifically ARPA cares and some of the other federal funding streams that are coming down right now. So we have a whole write-up about that. Um, it talks about, or it encourages non-federal entities to enter into state and local intergovernmental agreements to ensure more efficient use of federal funds. Um, so we, we have some information that I think will be helpful in making you feel comfortable using the EZIQC's program specifically with those federal funds.
Okay, all right, that would be greatly appreciated and.
Marty, maybe you can report back to us in two weeks and give us your expert opinion.
What I was going to ask is, is there any possibility that I could speak to a representative of BMP?
I'm sure we can get you, um, either the person that we've been dealing with, Eileen, I think it's Jay and, or someone. If you wanted someone higher up in the company, we could do that too.
No, whoever, whoever you've been dealing with, just to be, maybe email me his, his or her name and address. That'd be great. And then I'll just call them, I'll talk to them because I, I just, to be honest with you, I, I'd rather see a contract than anything else because then we can make sure there's things in there like Brian indicated about times of the essence and other things like that. We don't have to rely on a purchase order like, I hate to say this, like we're buying something from Sears. So I, I prefer to do that and maybe I can talk to them and see what they have to say. And maybe they can provide me with a few pieces of information or documents I can look at.
Well, Marty, I think we are looking for a contract, so that's a definite if we go this route. And do you have time to check out the Danbury building officials or their engineer?
Yeah, if Matt, if Matt, you want to pass over, did they give a, did they give a name, who they dealt with?
I told. Yeah, Antonio Agarola, yeah, we can call Antonio, sure. Okay. Oh, you're muted.
I said, that's not a possible.
Okay, all right.
Okay, what, what part of this do you need the building committee to do? What more do you need us to do?
I, I'd like a recommendations or a vote on the ceiling in the lobby from the building department, from the building committee.
What do you mean?
Well, someone took the bolted ceiling out of the project.
We, we did, yes, we decided, um.
Was that, was that?
No, we, we didn't, we didn't do a vote, no, we just.
I'd like.
Looking at the project.
You want it back in, right?
Well, I would like it back in unless it's going to cost a million dollars to put it back in.
So you want a cost factor on doing this so we can make a decision? Okay, that makes, yeah, I agree, all right.
So do you want, do you want to look at the cost of that? Is that what you're looking at doing?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we connect offline on that part of it and some of those details?
Okay.
Uh, but if, if Nancy, if you could check out some of the other references too, we'll provide that list when, when Brianna, and it may be in my office, but Brianna will send it to us if I don't have it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Uh, thank you very much. Hey, Brianna? Yeah, I just wanted to thank Brianna for being here tonight and spending so much time with us. And I apologize for mangling your name, uh, your way across the room in a little Zoom thing and I couldn't tell the V from the W. But thank you for being here. So I'll clarify your minds on the motion to table, those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Thank you very much, Brianna. We'll be back in touch. Uh, I'll give you a holler tomorrow so we can get that info, all right?
Sounds good. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks, Brianna.
Okay, thanks, guys. That was a productive discussion, so still have some more work to do, but better to do it right. Item number seven, considering a consideration of proposal from Jakunski Hughes for the engineering design for the firing range as recommended by Public Site and Building. This, so where we are with this is we voted at a previous meeting to put this out to bid, the, the firing range, uh, equipment and installation. However, no matter what vendor is chosen through that bid process, um, the architect still has to provide some services to, uh, to oversee modifications to the, to the firing range to make it possible to install. And that would include the, uh, not only the firing range equipment itself, the trading equipment, but also the HVAC systems that have to go in. Uh, now, some of that work is already done. Uh, so that's why the building committee, uh, stuck with Hughes, Jakunski Hughes, because otherwise they'd be starting from scratch and, and we'd have a much higher bid. So I would put a motion on the floor that we approve this proposal not to exceed $45,000 uh, for Jakunski Hughes to oversee the engineering and architectural changes. Uh, okay, wait a minute, delay that order. Nancy has her hand up. Go ahead, Nancy.
If you look at the proposal, the 45,000 is for their fees, but doesn't include whatever reimbursables. So if they have to print stuff or, so do you want to make it get a little higher not to exceed? Um, I know their contract, so their contract will be for 45,000. Reimbursables, I think Geraldine had figured in maybe 1,000 or 1,500, something like that, approximate. I don't see a lot of that happening, but the reimbursables which are listed, I have this, I have that up here to look at. I can go back to it and look at it. Um. Or things like.
Well, we won't have to worry about that unless we go to contract. So you could always put it in a contingency, right? When you actually put it out to bid, like, you know, if the price is going to be 400,000, because 10,000 of this is to, you know, so once we decide that, that's the direction we're going, we could add it up. And your contingent is whatever.
Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll keep the motion on the floor for that not to exceed 45,000, knowing that there could be some other minor contingencies when we go to contract with the various parts there, second? Okay, uh, and for future reference, Nancy, it'd be helpful for the committee to, to give us a number. If they, like, if you believe there needs to be a little bit of contingency in there, just so we're, you know, doing that all upfront. So thank you for that.
Right, and it's not really contingency, it's just the reimbursables, which are always an unknown.
Let me call it unknowns then, that, that we, you know, that come up, so we'll deal with that.
Nancy, got a question. The fire range was really left off the original, um, project. So, so there was no drawings done of the equipment or the installation of the equipment in the original drawings?
There, there were some, there were some schematics and such done there, yes.
Because it was an ad alternate, I think.
Yes, it was an ad alter.
What was the committee's feeling on the 35,000 dollars for the construction documents?
I mean, the, the 45 for, what do you mean for Brian, Brian Hughes, right?
The overall 45.
Um, right, so.
He was the architect of record. He should have all those drawings right in his CAD and everything and just be able to push a button and bring them up and just.
Right, but then he's going to need to update them too. Um, and there are some parts of it that, um, so there were some changes in the way that the range is going to be laid out. And then, um, in the ready room, I'm not sure what they're going to call it. We keep calling it a ready room. Um, behind the range, there's some work in there, things, some HVAC in there, finishes, et cetera. And so his, his, the amount of work that he's going to have to look at as far as completing the range is minor compared to the larger amount of the actual range equipment and installation of all that.
I, I just got a question, maybe Matt or Marty. If we approved the 45,000 now and, and I have no idea what the other work is going to cost. If it's over a million dollars, it has to go to referendum for approval. So is the architect's fees included in that large number?
I think we did that before with the projects. I mean, not, not this 45,000, we had other expenses, I believe, for other projects that we got to go out the bid and we paid that ahead of time. So I, I wouldn't include it, not the 45,000.
And I'm just, okay, thank you.
Right, because I think we had to, for the school projects, you know, we had the architect in place to be able to come up with some schematics and then that bottom line to go to referendum amount with the agreement, which was in the whole referendum language, wasn't on the ballot, but it was part of the ballot.
Right, you, that we would pay the architect.
That said that if the rest, if, if we would, we would pay the architect up to where they were. If the referendum wasn't approved, everything would stop, we'd pay them what we owed them and decide from there. So, um, one of the things that we need to put a budget, a good budget amount together for the project is to have the, have Jakunski Hughes or whoever, we're hoping it's Jakunski Hughes, um, put together some good, solid schematics or even further because they've got most of the information they have, as you said, Rich, um, from what they did initially, so that we can have somebody look at that and put together, you know, some, some kind of a, um, a budget amount for us. Because right now we're just estimating.
I, I take, Nancy, that's the reason why they originally want to put this out the bid. So we know what kind of monies we're dealing with. We don't want to end up with a situation where it ends up being 1 million, 100,000 dollars and we don't, we don't go to a referendum, we're going to have a lot of problems.
Right, but we need the plans to be able to go out to bid.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we already agreed to this, we already agreed to do the plans. I mean, this is, and we're doing it in steps. We get the plans, then we figure out where we are after we get the plan. So I think everyone's fine with it right now, right?
Right.
The question.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, any other questions?
No.
All right, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you, Nancy. Uh, I remember, I remember a consideration of, we're, we're still piecing together the Sustainable Bethel Commission. We have two more seats to fill. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we fill one of those seats tonight and we're still looking for one more volunteer beyond that. So my motion is to appoint Sunita Malkani, who is unaffiliated to the Sustainable Bethel Commission. A second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Item number nine, consideration of purchase of next gen CAD system for the Stony Hill Fire Department and the Bethel Volunteer Fire Department in an amount not to exceed 10,000 dollars as recommended by the Fire Commission. Uh, so I'll put a motion on the floor, uh, to approve the, approve, to approve the purchase of the next gen CAD systems not to exceed 10,000 dollars. Okay, you second that, Brad? So what this, we, we already approved the overall dispatch system, the CAD system for the Police Department. It turns out that there are modules that will vastly improve the efficiency of the dispatch operation and data collection and reporting to the state for our two fire departments. The total amount of those systems come to 9,510, but I see the Fire Commission rounded that up to 10,000 dollars in case there are any unforeseen costs in the installation. But you see the quotes there and that was approved by the Fire Commission on March 30th if there, if it needed.
Are you recommending this from out of capital now with your current?
Yes, 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 thank you. Yeah, let me, let me add that to the motion that we recommend out of capital, C and R capital number, correct? Thank you for the reminder. Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number 10, um, consideration of your recommendation from the Bethel Republican Town Committee to appoint William Duff to the position of constable. And I'll make that motion. Um, Mr. Duff is a Republican and this is a reappointment, I believe, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right, second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, looking at the letter, aye. Item number 11, consideration of appointment of Jennifer Lewis. Um, and I'm going to make a motion that we table because if there's some confusion as to what position she's taking and if it's supposed to be, if, if, I might have made a mistake in a previous recommendation. I, I want to straighten that out before we, if I, if I have made a mistake before we compound it. So I'll put a motion on the floor to table for one cycle. Okay, those in favor? Aye, that carries. Item number 12, consideration of Aquarian Water Company donation of property at Old Turnpike Road. Uh, this is a decommissioned well, which is no longer in use. Um, this well used to provide water to the McHower Circle Water Company, which was an independent water company that was, that was formed when the neighborhood was constructed, probably close to 30, 35 years ago. Uh, the water system was purchased about seven or eight years ago by the Aquarian Company. They connected the, and there were, there were some real issues with that water. They connected the, and there were, there were some real issues with that, uh, water operation too, so Aquarian. Uh, connected the system to their overall distribution system to both Bethel and. To the north end of Bethel and to this town of Newtown and decommissioned and capped this well. And now they want to, uh, donate that property back to the town, so, um.
I thought, I thought we had done that, uh, six months ago.
Uh, we, we agreed to accept it, but we, we didn't have the, the formal letter. So basically, this is just signing up the legal ads. So I'll make, I'll put a motion on the floor that we accept the donation of property at Five Old Turn, Turnpike Road from the Aquarian Water Company of Connecticut.
Second.
Okay, uh, Marty, did you have anything to add to that, or?
Just, uh. It's a long process, Rich, that's why it hasn't been done. What they're gonna do is, they sent us a very, uh, a letter agreement. And, um, they want it signed and they're gonna take that, they have to go to PURA. They have to formally go through the process with PURA. It could take, they're estimating that. It will probably not be until next September, so before they actually in a position to give it to us. There is one condition, I don't know if I mentioned this to you, Matt, they want it to be passive open space used for the property. So no ball fields, uh, you know, you get walk, you can have picnics, but basically just, it's gonna stay as open space.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number thirteen, the addition to the agenda. What this is, this is a, uh, resolution to commence condemnation proceedings on a, on certain pieces of property. Uh, the town of Bethel has had a grant application for one point five million dollars. Uh, to be used for sidewalk improvements and construction, to add sidewalks in places of town that are. To make our downtown more walkable, more accessible and safer, uh, so. Uh, this involves several places around town, but the largest piece is on Worcester Street. And regrettably, there are, uh, a few property, uh, a few properties in which the owners have. Uh, not agreed to give us, uh, small easement. Um, you know, and, and because of the, because of the shape of the property, the property, where the property lines fall. It's not possible to redesign the sidewalk to stay entirely within the town's legal right of way there. You know, there's anywhere from a few inches to maybe a foot of a little bit of property in those, in those, uh, places to. Uh, to build the, to construct the sidewalk, so unfortunately, this. Situation is holding up the one and a half million dollar grant and, uh, preventing us from making those public safety improvements. So, um, I'm going to put a motion on the floor, uh, in order to move forward with this. I move that the town of Bethel commence condemnation proceedings to obtain permanent sidewalk easements for those properties where easements may be required. At numbers sixty, seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy-nine, eighty-seven. And ninety-one Worcester Street for the current Worcester Durant project. And to authorize the Director of Public Works to obtain the final mapping and appraisals as required for the easements and condemnations. Uh, is there a second? Okay, any questions?
Have any of the residents give a reason why they don't wanna do it?
Some.
Well, I was gonna say, some have not responded, some have responded in a manner that I would not care to repeat in, in, uh. In an open meeting, to tell you the truth.
I guess, you know, for me, I wanna weigh the town's needs, do you know what I mean, but I also wanna respect. Personal property individuals, um, you know. I personally would appreciate it if we just gave them a chance and if they don't respond, fine. To come before the board and speak to us about what is it that your concern is and try and get. Willing compliance rather than.
Oh, that, yes, uh.
Right, I mean, I mean, for me, I look, I haven't been here through the whole process.
Yeah.
That's all, and I just, you know, taking people's property is serious business. Whether it's a foot or two feet, whatever it is, just, you know, I don't know the whole background, but I'd be interested to see. Invite them to come to the next selectments meeting and if they don't come, then fine, we give you an opportunity to air your grievances with us.
Well, the, 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 the process, well, first of all, there have been multiple attempts to, uh, to reach out to them. Um, as I said, some have not responded, some have, uh, responded very negatively. Uh, there will be further attempts as required by law, so they will have that opportunity. Uh, so, uh, can you explain that to me, Marty? Like what?
No, basically, I'm gonna tell you what I've done already. I sent very lengthy letters to all the property owners. We provided them with a copy of the appraisal of what the value was of the land that we were talking about. Being, uh, taken for easement purposes. You have to remember, we're not, we're not looking to own the property, we're just looking. For the right to lay the sidewalk on there. And most of them, uh, and I know you said it doesn't make a difference if it's a dollar or one foot or two foot, most of them are very small. All right, uh, some of them are only like fifteen, I'm sorry, twenty or thirty square feet over a length of maybe. You know, thirty feet long, so it's like a foot wide, that's it. There is one that's much larger than the others because of the fact that it's a very large piece of property, so it's, it's very lengthy. So what'll happen is, uh, assuming the board votes for this, uh, the, uh. We're gonna, we're gonna update the appraisals for the ones that we believe that we may have to condemn. There's a couple that we probably aren't gonna condemn. I had one person, when she got the letter, immediately showed up my office to sign documents and of course. We weren't ready to do that because we need everybody to agree or we need to have the final plans in effect. And we couldn't do that because we didn't know what the other people were gonna do. Then I had another woman call me, who indicated that she was more than happy, uh, to deal with it. And as Matt said, we had a couple of them that were, uh, extremely hostile. Um, I'm not sure that they're gonna agree to anything, uh, less than, less than a tremendous amount of money, which is. Not gonna happen for an easement. So what, what'll happen is if we go forward with the, with these condemnations, we're gonna take the process again. We're gonna update the appraisals, we're gonna send them out to the, to the people, we're gonna tell them what the appraiser says and shows them the amount that it's worth. All right, ask them to go ahead and contribute, they don't wanna contribute, they don't wanna come in, then at that point, we're gonna have to go forward with the condemnations. And I, 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 I thought what was gonna happen is just like what Matt said, that when we had the people say no. I went back to the, uh, and Matt did too, went back to the Public Works Director and asked him to see if he could remap. And, and talk to the surveyors about remapping where it's gonna go and it turned out, we can't do that, just not there, so.
Uh, and it's, uh, we're not actually taking property either, it, it's gonna be compensated at fair value, correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
Oh, okay, but, you know, the, the concern I have is that this is holding up a valuable public works, public safety project. That, uh, uh, will allow families, kids, moms with strollers to access downtown safely on a sidewalk. Uh, which those neighbors up there have been asking for, for many years. Uh, so I, I, I'm gonna vote to support this, uh, and there, there will be more conversations with the property owners. Uh, they'll have a chance to, uh, talk to us. Uh, I, I'll tell you, uh, plainly though, I'm not in favor of. Um, if they wanna come and d- address the board of selectmen, that's fine, but I, I, I don't see myself changing my mind. Uh, on a, on a one and a half million dollar public safety project, but that, that's up to.
I guess I just don't understand, you know, I haven't seen what the concerns were, why they said no. I have no, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, I can drive by the properties, but I just, I'm trying to understand what was the concern. Does it affect their right to develop the property? Is there anything, you know, any easements, Marty, that create an issue for them where they can't gain access? I mean, that's, I guess that would be my question. Will it change, anything that will limit their use of the property if the sidewalk's gone?
Well, so, so far what you mentioned, the answers to those things were no. They wa- they weren't affecting any construction, nobody talked about that. They weren't, uh, uh, affecting ingress and egress, there was nothing like that. I, I, there was one who I was just pretty sure was anti-government.
Yes.
And, uh, there was another one who, uh, you know, had some concerns that they didn't wanna have to deal with having to maintain a sidewalk.
They, they didn't wanna shovel snow, correct? That, that was, that was the only one that gave a reason, really.
Other than that, that was it, I mean, you know, it's, uh, like I said, if we were, if we were taking, you know. A substantial amount of property or something was happening, just like what Brian was talking about. You know, that it's gonna affect their property where it's not marketable or they can't, they can't use it for construction the way they wanna use it. I certainly could understand that, but that's not the case. We're talking about not a lot of space, not a lot of land, so. And I have, I have copies already, the surveyor's already done it, in fact, it's been done twice now. All right, uh, the actual square footage in the area where it's located. And, uh, it really doesn't encroach on anybody's rights as far as I can see, other than it's, it's their property, um, so.
Marty, did, were any of the sidewalks required or retaining wall or anything that? You know, when it was cut in from the road that the town had to build a retaining wall to hold the property back?
Oh, not that I know of, none of them.
There was no major.
No, it's all pretty flat. There's nothing, you know, there, there, there was nothing there, and I, I, I didn't mention before, but I'll mention it again. Uh, I'm sorry, I'll mention it now, uh, to Brian that, one of the things, if we do have to condemn any of the properties, we're hoping that. There's only gonna be a couple of them, not all six of them, all right, but if we have to condemn them, we have to get two appraisals for the courts. We gotta give two appraisals and then what the average of the value of the land is that we're looking to take. We have to pay into the court before, or just when the action is started, so the court is well aware of what the money's gonna be at the time.
Any other questions? Uh, it just as a reminder, we already appointed, uh, counsel to that, which is Kerry Olson. So, from Ruth Colina. So, uh, with no other questions, I'll try your minds, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Right, the, the motion carries. Last item is, uh, the annual consideration of the fair housing resolution as required by state and federal law. I will read this into the record. Uh, whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. And whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status. Or national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities. And be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas Connecticut Fair Housing Laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry. Sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, physical or mental disability. Sexual orientation or gender identity or expression be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities. Including rental and homeownership opportunities and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas the town of Bethel is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws. Must be supplemented by an affirmative action statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to fall. And equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Bethel hereby endorses a fair hous- housing policy to ensure. Equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing and enjoy all other housing-related services. And of their choice in a, on a non-discriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And be it resolved further that the chief executive officer of the town of Bethel or his or her designated representative. Is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be a victim of illegal discriminatory housing practices within the town of Bethel. And for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with the state, with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. Or the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center. Legal Services or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities. Adopted by the town of Bethel and I'll date it for, uh, today and I'll put that resolution on the floor for approval, is there a second? Any discussion?
Second.
Got it. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. That concludes our agenda, entertain the motion.
No, Matt, Matt, don't, don't you have a consideration to time a referendum?
We did that already, we did a special meeting at, uh, ten minutes, uh, to say, uh, ten minutes to seven.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Thanks for checking, appreciate it. Okay, now, I'll, I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor to adjourn. Sorry, all right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you very much, Marty, thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.